We had one.
We'll call this work session to order. Let's see, we have, looking at our agenda, we'll have the payment of bills, go over the minutes. And first up is Resolution Number eighty-six seventy-nine twenty-five authorizing the mayor execute an agreement with Global Aerospace for unmanned aircraft insurance policy. Ms. Carrier.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. So this resolution does allow us to amend our current policy to add a new police drone to our coverage. It will extend that coverage till the annual renewal, which is July first. And also with this resolution is request to add any other newly acquired drone throughout the year before that policy renews if the cost doesn't exceed a thousand dollars per drone and it's within our budget.
Very well. Any questions from council? Mr. Schultz.
Did you say if it does not exceed a thousand, we can add it? So what if it does?
I would come back before the council and let you know. And I would, that would be a new resolution. But this particular drone coverage is four hundred and forty-one dollars. So unless they buy a much larger or more expensive, it should be well within a thousand dollars, I suspect.
Okay.
But we would come back before the council if it exceeded that amount.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Resolution Number eighty-six eighty-two five authorizing the mayor execute an agreement with Jefferson County Commission for the Senior Center Nutrition Grant. Ms. Cobal.
Good evening. Yes, this is just a standard agreement with Jefferson County. They have a community grant for twenty thousand dollars that they, that goes towards the Senior Center, and we use that for the new sharing program.
Very well. Any questions? Thank you. I guess you're gonna stay up here for Mr. Peppers. Resolution authorized, let's see, eighty-six eighty-one twenty-five execute an agreement with the University of Alabama at Birmingham for student internships within the Parks and Rec Department at the Hoover Senior Center.
Yes, this is another standard agreement. We do a good job at the Senior Center in getting interns throughout the year, and this is a non-paid internship that really meets the requirements they have for their coursework. And this intern will do a lot of research and some programs they create at the Senior Center.
Very well. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
I'll do this one, too.
You would, okay. Resolution Number eighty-six eighty-four twenty-five authorizing the chief of police to execute a Fifth Amendment antenna site lease schedule.
I'm not the chief of police.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was asking. Oh, I did skip one. Hold on, I'm sorry. Eighty-six eighty-two twenty-five amending the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for the Hoover Met bullpen renovations and sewer line installation.
Yes, on November seventeenth, we had a water main break at the Hoover Met, and it happened to be under the left field bullpen. So all that area got torn up and needs to be repaired. As part of the request for fiscal year twenty-six budget, we had in there for both bullpens to be renovated. And so instead of repairing one, right now, we would like to renovate both of them using remaining funds from the current rec center roof project. And also include in that a sewer line installation that would connect to the portable restroom unit we have during the S E C tournament behind the right field deck.
Anything to add?
Just that we're budgeting eighty thousand dollars transferring from leftover funds on our roofing project. And it leaves us with about a little over two hundred thousand dollars still in that project to be allocated to something else.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
Ms. Cobal, do you expect the need for all those repairs and the sewer line repair and everything else to exceed the eighty thousand?
I do not. One thing I did want to add, we're on a tight timeline because it's going to take six to eight weeks to get the material in for the repairs, and we've got events starting the first of February. So that's why we're trying to get this approved so quickly.
Mr. President, one question I have. Will this be a Band-Aid approach? The only reason I ask that is I don't know the age of that infrastructure. So how far out are we going back to? Do we need to go ahead and take care of a certain amount now? Because what happened is you replaced this, and then a single point of failure occurred at the weakest point on an infrastructure line, and it would be a break upstream or downstream. So do we want to? Well, I'll put it like this, if you're asking for this tonight, can y'all evaluate additional needs based upon the age of infrastructure and maybe come back to us with any type of amendment, since they're going to evaluate it? That's what I would ask.
Sure.
Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, Resolution eighty-six eighty-four twenty-five authorizing chief of police to execute a Fifth Amendment antenna site lease schedule agreement with Pinnacle Towers. Mr. Coop.
Counsel, Mr. President. This is just a standard agreement with, it's actually Crown Castle Pinnacle that's been going on since the nineteen nineties. So this is an extension of that five-year agreement that has the standard increase in it, and this is for radio connectivity for dispatch and police at the Tyler Road location. And it's going to be the exact same thing for the resolution underneath it. Those are just two different devices, separate leases that are on that tower.
Very good. Any questions for eighty-six eighty-four twenty-five and eighty-six eighty-three twenty-five?
Mr. President, where is, where is this tower?
Old Tyler Road.
Old Tyler?
Yes, sir. Telview, is it? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Coop. Moving on to the regular agenda, Resolution Number eighty-six seventy-eight twenty-five resolution approving and authorizing the reimbursement of legal services performed for a city officer who desired to secure legal services other than those normally provided by the city. Mr. Waldrop.
I guess, Steve didn't want to be here.
Mr. Brunson.
Good idea. First time Steve's been asked to leave, and he actually did.
About how the decision is to be made. Three-pronged test. Three, actually, three votes that need to be taken.
Mr. Brunson, can you speak into the microphone over here? I'm sorry.
So this opinion will detail the criteria for the council to make the decision. The short answer there on the first page is it is lawful, and there is no specific prohibition for making this decision. Page two details the, the public purpose test. So the first vote would be to determine if this serves a legitimate public purpose. The second, the second test would be to determine if this was related to official duties. And if those two are met, then the council can vote on whether or not to actually pay those legal fees. It's our opinion, as you'll see in here, in our summary, that it is, that the first two criteria are met, and that, that's, that's our opinion detailed in here. And the, and the actual third vote, if you two, if you guys approve those first two, the vote would then be whether or not to pay the fees.
Very good. Ms. Dickerson, can you make sure these are entered into the official records?
Yes, I will.
Any questions from council on this?
Yes, sir, if I could.
Go for it.
I don't know, who's here from finance that I could ask? Everybody abandoned you. Robert, how would these funds, where would these funds come from? Unallocated? Or just funds are sitting out there waiting to be budgeted?
Yes, sir, it would take, probably take a budget. I don't know.
I, I have the funds in my account. I have funds for-
In your account? You've been saving up.
Well, I have the legal fees account, so.
Thank you.
It would come out of the legal fees.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Resolution Number eighty-six eighty-five twenty-five authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement with Central Alabama Water to install fire hydrants in the foothills of Black Ridge.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. This is a standard agreement for the installation of three hydrants on five estate lots where they're, the lots are a little bit larger than normal. Pretty simple contract. This is something we do all the time. But I have had a couple of council members to ask me about hydrants. And so if you would give me just a couple of minutes, I can explain, so maybe you would understand better. There are two types of, two groups of hydrants within our city. First of all, we operate under four different water systems. Central Alabama, Bessemer, Shelby County, and Pelham. Birmingham or Central Alabama Water Works is the only department, Water Works Department, that actually charges us and makes us pay rent on the, on the various hydrants. There are two groups of hydrants within our city, private and public. You can't tell the difference. They, they don't operate any different, they look the same. But if a company or a developer builds a facility and they put hydrants behind the water meter, then that's considered to be a private hydrant. So for instance, if you had a shopping center that had ten fire hydrants there, and they were considered to be private, when those hydrants are, need repair, then that developer or that owner of the complex is responsible for the repair of those. Now, the fire department maintains over thirty-four hundred hydrants within our fire department coverage area. We, we maintain those once a year. We flow them, we test them, we paint them, we service them. But when repairs need to be made, it's up to the, the developer or the, or the owner, or if it's a public hydrant, then Birmingham Water Works, Pelham, Bessemer, or Shelby County takes care of that. Long story short, we have about fourteen hundred and eighty, give or take, public hydrants within our city. We pay two, about two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Actually, we pay twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents per month, per hydrant. You multiply that times fourteen twenty-nine, and that's, in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually that we pay Birmingham for hydrant rental. Now, that fluctuates a little bit based on the Consumer Price Index. And when hydrants are installed in developments, the developer is responsible for the installation of those hydrants according to our standards. And they pay the first three years' rent on those hydrants, and then the city assumes those hydrants. So it fluctuates a little bit. So I just wanted to be able to share that information with you so you would understand. But the city spends nearly four hundred thousand dollars annually on hydrant rental. And what Birmingham or, or Central Alabama Water Works tells us is that that's the use of the water. And so if we have a major fire or something somewhere, we're not charged for that. That's the reason our fire department is not trained on areas where they're private hydrants, because we wouldn't want to, to use water from a private meter. That's the reason we use public hydrants when we train. So those are just some questions that some people had asked me over the past couple of weeks, and I wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Bentley?
Chief, are these, you talk about private hydrants. Are these going to be private hydrants that we're voting on, on Monday?
These are public hydrants. In signature homes, the developer will install these hydrants according to our standards. They'll pay the first three years' rent, and then after three years, they'll, they'll move to our-
Do we have any hydrants in non-multi-family properties, like single-family or estate, that are private hydrants?
We do. We do have hydrants within apartment complexes, townhome complexes.
Not, not within those, like on single-family or estate lots? Things like that, would, would any of those be private hydrants?
Not to my knowledge.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Some of the hydrants are, you said you paint them, and they have different colored tops on them. What is the, what do the different colors mean?
So we, we go by the NFPA two ninety-one standard that tells us whatever that hydrant flows, we paint it according to the hydrant flow. So a blue top hydrant flows over fifteen hundred gallons per minute. We do not use green because we don't have many green hydrants, but we do use orange and red. A red hydrant is the, is five hundred gallons of water or less per minute. You don't need to be alarmed about that if you have a red top hydrant in, in your front lawn, you're going to be fine. But it gives us an idea of what, what will flow from that hydrant. And that's the reason we paint them that color.
Is there life expectancy for them?
There's, there's hydrants in downtown Birmingham that are Ludlow hydrants that have been there since nineteen oh eight and still operational.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chief. Okay, Resolution Number eighty-six seventy-five twenty-five authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of intent to sell the property located at thirty twenty-one Loner Road. Do we have an update on this, Mr. Waldrop?
I do, and I spoke with Mr. Casanova. He, he's had some illness and said that he did not plan on being here. But he is sending me a, a contract that I don't have. I just looked at my cell just now. But basically, it's what we, what you'd seen before. I had some conversation with him, and I said, I don't know what the number is that the council has in mind, but I'll tell you what I think might make sense is if you leave the five thousand dollars as earnest money, that'd be non-refundable. That'd be good for thirty days, that we would not try to market the property to anybody else. After that, we could market to anyone, unless during that first thirty days, he provides verifiable receipts or invoices where he has spent fifteen thousand dollars on his due diligence. And that if he has spent fifteen thousand dollars, then that, to me, would indicate that he's more than just kicking tires, he's really serious about trying to make the property working at that point, then we would not market the property to anybody for sixty days. I said, this is not, this is not a legal matter so much, that's just what I would recommend, but it's up to the council whether or not that indicates to you that he's a serious buyer. But he, he has every indication to me, he said he had no problem doing that. And I said, the fifteen thousand dollars, it could be for architectural fees, that they go to a phase one environmental assessment. So I think, I think according to him, that's the first thing they're going to do because they need that for their financing. I have no idea what that's going to cost. And he said that they had a design person to come in and start laying out design because this is going to be a sleep clinic, and there's going to be a great deal of remodeling. So that's where we are. I told him I would call after the work session, let him know kind of what your sense of this is. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
The five thousand and the fifteen thousand in, in expenses would, would meet the one percent standard industry that we discussed.
Five thousand is non-refundable. Fifteen thousand doesn't go to us, it goes to his due diligence efforts.
It shows good faith.
It's got to be within the first thirty days. And then after that, if he spends the fifteen thousand, then we will not market the property to anyone else for a period of sixty days. That gives him his ninety days to get his financing in order and do whatever it is he's going to do.
Any questions from Mr. Waldrop on this?
Just one point of clarification, Attorney Waldrop. The forty-eight hour closing requirement, if we receive a bona fide offer from someone else, is that requirement-
That would be off the table if you, if you agree to this, giving him the extra sixty days.
Okay, that's exactly what I was, I was wondering, is if we could accept an offer at any time in the ninety day period, or if we accept his twenty thousand dollar investment?
If he does what, if he does what he's committed to do in the contract, then it would be off the market for ninety days. But it would only be after he has spent twenty thousand dollars, five thousand in non-refundable earnest money, fifteen thousand in due diligence expense.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. President, Mr. Waldrop, you'd indicated that the fifteen and the five would get him sixty days, correct?
It would give him sixty beyond, five thousand gives him thirty days.
Right, right. And then the other gives him sixty, so where-
And then the other sixty comes in.
Where does it go from sixty to ninety?
From, at the end of thirty days, if he has given us verifiable invoices that he has spent fifteen thousand dollars in hard money in his due diligence efforts, then at that point, he would get an additional sixty days.
Okay, so that makes the thirty into sixty, that makes ninety.
To allow him to complete his due diligence and get his financing in order.
And after ninety days?
Then we keep, we keep the five thousand if he hasn't closed.
And if somebody else came to the city with an offer, we could accept it?
If somebody comes during that ninety day period, we could still enter into a, a contract subject to the contract that we have.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Attorney Waldrop, it's for the public, purpose of public, and correct me if I'm wrong, from a definition of due diligence, typically on those buildings, you're going to have to hire a structural engineer, HVAC, a lot of different agencies to evaluate whether the building is in certain order for what they want to do. I don't know what they want to do, whether they want to gut it out or not, that's be up to them. And then that, and for the purpose of them determining how much money they have to spend for. So when you talk about due diligence, it's really about that building footprint of evaluating from a, and they got to hire several folks to get those reports, is that correct?
That's correct. He, and he claimed to me a, a number significantly more than fifteen thousand dollars. And I told him that if, if you start getting into those kind of numbers that you're talking about what you're going to spend, it is going to be a lot more than that. The other thing is that if we start trying to define what he's going to have to spend the money on.
Yeah.
Then we run into an issue. I, I just think we have to use our, just business judgment about what is due diligence, what is he going to spend?
Is there an extension clause past the ninety days of paying additional money to get thirty days?
We, we don't have that in there.
Okay. Is that something we want to consider, or some we would not recommend?
I mean, that's, that's not a legal issue, that's a practical business issue for you. But if y'all want to put that in there, that he could pay a certain amount of money and get an extension. He's, he's given me every indication that he plans on closing this within the ninety days, unless he runs into some issue during the due diligence.
So, Mr. President, the only comment I'll make, because I've been in part of some of these evaluations in the past, sometimes you can get on that last two days and need additional evaluation. We can do a one-time extension of thirty days at a cost if we want to add that in there, but it'll be up to the pleasure of the board, of the council.
If y'all decide to do that, you could do that at the meeting Monday night, and say you want to amend the, the contract to include that, that's up to you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further questions? Moving on to ordinance number twenty-five twenty-six eighty-five to amend ordinance number two six three, the city of Hoover is entitled to zoning ordinance of the city of Hoover, Alabama, for the property located at nine hundred concourse Parkway from split PI planned industrial and PO planned office to PO planned office. Mr. Martin.
Good evening. Good to be in front of you without having to deal with weeds. We have a zoning case coming up for first reading. As you read, this particular piece of property, it's approximately seven and a half acres in size. It's an undeveloped tract of land in the far south end of the office park portion of River Chase. And there is approximately one acre of that seven and a half acre tract that is zone planned industrial. And so it creates a situation where you have split zoning on a singular tract of land. Not a great practice to have that situation. And so the planning commission heard this particular matter at their November planning commission meeting, and it comes to you with a positive recommendation for a rezoning to eliminate that split zoning issue on the property and to have the entire seven and a half acres zoned PO planned office.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, how does this comport with the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan does support this particular rezoning effort. It calls for office and light industrial development in the vicinity. So the PO planned office district would fit within that.
Any further questions?
Yes, sir. If the new owner, I'm assuming there's going to be a new owner that buys this property to develop it, will they come back to planning and zoning and/or the council for any additional changes once it's, it goes to planned office?
Depends on the use. So if we have someone that's interested in purchasing the property and developing it for a purpose that the zoning ordinance defines, say, as a conditional use, and having to come and get that additional entitlement to develop the property for that purpose, then they would be back to the planning commission and this body to do that.
How many? How many different uses are identified within PO?
There are several. Most of them that are permitted by right are within that, the confines of the office use. So you can have general office, you can have professional office space, which can include a number of different professional office types, architecture, engineering, medical purposes. There are not very many uses beyond that office type that are permitted by right in that district.
Okay, I was just bringing it up because we do have some new members to the council, and they not, may not be as familiar with these terms. Perhaps you could email those different types that are, that are available under planned office to the council?
Sure thing.
And that way, we would all be able to understand exactly what is permitted.
Sure. I will say it is not as permissive as the PI zone, which again is across approximately a portion, an acre portion of this site. But sure, we can get the list out to the body.
But if it's voted, it would be all PO at that point.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Schultz? Can you get those emails to us before the meeting on Monday?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay. Anybody got anything?
Yes, Mr. President, if I can indulge you for maybe only two or three minutes. August, on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the previous council saw the need to have support, assistance support from a council standpoint. For example, we have no support, no administrator, no anything. So as a large city, when individuals call the council, whether they want us to come to events or schedule meetings or have questions about ordinance or want to meet with us, whatever it may be, we are our administrator in the entire nine yards. That's not efficient whatsoever if we call ourselves want to be a larger city. Places like Huntsville have two assistants, lead assistants, even Dothan has a assistant, special assistant to their city, as well as a governmental affairs person for the council. I won't use Birmingham as a model because they're a lot more robust, if you will. They have a couple people per council, ninety-nine neighborhoods, ninety-nine neighborhood presidents, so they're very engaged, so we don't need to that level. Spoke with the mayor as well, too, because this will be something new for us, and I didn't, we didn't want to proceed with this without determining who the new council folks are going to be. That'd make a lot of sense. But the idea was similar to, from a legal standpoint, the mayor determines or suggests legal representation, and then the council confirms. This would be the opposite way around. Council recognize who, what they want in a particular role, and the mayor will have to confirm that, and they'll share some responsibility. That gets a lot more transparency right away with having a leader supporting that. I have not, from a transparency standpoint, I have not sent anyone the job description or anything for this particular reason. Previously, it was possibly some council folks that may wanted to consider that role, even if they wanted to look at it, you know? So they want to stay out of as much as possible, so for the purpose of that, I did not share with anyone. So for a public- So for a public discussion, I want to make sure, if anyone here would like to possibly take a look at that, even if they're looking at the job description, whether they apply or not, in that way, I will not issue the request for y'all to look through the job description, provide any edits or comments. You will not be a part of that email thread. So that's my first question.
Mr. Murphy, for transparency purposes, I will say that there may be interest upon my part, so you can omit me from further discussions and emails.
Okay, so that'll be upon record. Madam Protim? So I'll say that. So let me hand this out, and I'll circulate an email tomorrow morning, and I'll ask everyone to the next Friday to get your comments on the job description, things of that nature. But let me pass out the resolution as well as the draft job description. This job description also has been vetted by our attorney from a draft standpoint, again, draft. And if you can pass this down to the mayor and legal counsel. All right. I will send out a timeline. The goal is to at least put this job out, if agreeable, this year. We won't make any moves to next year. And we'll discuss from a valuation standpoint, interviewing at that particular point. But again, this is, I did not share for a particular reason, and we did not proceed until the new council got on as well, too. So any questions from me thus far, or be happy to-
Ms. Murphy, I would assume that we would wait until we had that position budgeted.
Yeah, that's another thing, too. It was not budgeted. The office of the city council and the position and name was identified, but from a budgetary standpoint, no, it was not budgeted. But we said we will bring it back next year for any type of amendment. That's a good question. Any additional questions? All right, I yield. Mr. President, back to you.
Any further comments from council tonight?
Ms. President, Ms. Dickerson, when might we expect a copy of the bills? They don't seem to be in my workbook.
I'll make sure you have them tonight.
Do they have them on their tablets at this point?
I'm not sure. Hold on, let me make sure that I received them this afternoon. Okay, I have them, so I'll send them out.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, for that, we're adjourned. Thank you.